Please rise for invocation by Father Matt Mello of Our Lady of Hope Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, our God, look with love on the people of this community and keep them safe in your service. Guide the members of this council and help them to work together for the good of all. Bless their plans and deliberations, and especially this week, dear Lord, their plans for selecting a new city manager and bring them to success. Father, we ask this grace through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Holy.
Here.
Councilmember Tremont.
Here.
Councilmember Stilner.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here. Certificate of Special Awards Reports Recognition and Proclamations. I don't see Coach Butts as he slipped in.
He had something come up.
Okay.
We're gonna have to reschedule him.
That's all right. I did recognize him at his last home game via proclamation on site, so.
Yeah, and I learned that just after I had put in the request, but still, the amount of years in Port Orange, I thought it'd be fitting to have to do that here in Chambers as well.
Just for some background, Coach George Butts has been the girls' basketball coach at Atlantic High School almost since the school opened and has won 500 games, has taken the team to the Final Four a couple times, has had a McDonald's All-American, has put several girls into college via scholarship, athletic scholarship, and has just been a terrific godsend to have a person like that in our community. And this was his last season as coach, and he'll be retiring, I think, next January after 30-plus years in the Blush County school system. And because of that and people like him, we want to make sure that we recognize that as part of our community. So thank you to Coach Butts. And Chase, please add on.
Well, just, he recently named the Calvary head coach, so he's still gonna be doing it, but it'll be up in Ormond. But it'll be a fitting send-off, at least from the city's perspective. If we can get him on the next available agenda, he'll be ready to rock.
I'll point it to you if you actually get it rescheduled.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Report from PFM regarding the portfolio performance for the year ended September 30th, 2022.
Mayor and Council, Dr. Scott Neils, Chief Financial Officer and Finance Director. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Scott Stilner, Stitcher, Neils.
You don't want me giving this report, I'm gonna tell you right now. My skill set is limited.
It might be a shorter report if we did.
So he's with PFM Financial Management. They're our investment advisors. I put a lot of credibility in what they have to say. I've been very happy with the information they provide us and the information that they give us in order to manage our financial assets better. So, Scott, I'll be right here, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Good to see everyone. It's been quite some time since I've been able to get out and do one of these meetings, so it's actually quite a treat to be here with you all this evening. So I thank you for the opportunity. As Scott mentioned, our firm's been entrusted with managing a high-quality fixed income portfolio on behalf of the city. We do so within the guidelines of Florida State Statute 218.415, as well as city ordinance and your investment policy. And all three of those state that we have to take the safety of principle as the most important thing that we do, followed by liquidity and return. So keep that in the back of your mind, sort of, as we go through this report, because you're not gonna see NASDAQ-like numbers in this report. But again, that's driven by what Florida State Statute tells us we need to do as well, again, as your ordinance and investment policy. So I just tried to, there we go, little lag. Okay, good. So, there are a lot of words on this page, but I just wanted to paint a brief backdrop on kind of the numbers we're gonna be looking at tonight. Again, we're looking at the most recent fiscal year end. The city's fiscal year end is September 30, 2020. So we're looking at the 12 months that preceded that. So briefly, I'll just say that we entered 2020 approaching an all-time record for consecutive months of growth in the United States. And that rapid growth came to a screeching halt in March of 2020 with the realization that the pandemic was upon the shores of the United States. COVID continues to dominate the headlines. It continues to influence the path of the recovery here in the United States. I found it kind of interesting, I heard someone say, if you closed your eyes or you went to sleep in January of 2020 and you woke up in December, you would've thought nothing of the year. You know, the markets were quite resilient and provided great returns, and growth returned to the United States, and the employment picture improved. But in reality, it was a tumultuous year with a lot of volatility, especially in the fixed income markets where liquidity dried up. There was this huge flight to quality during the first quarter. What I mean by that is if you weren't in treasuries, then you did not do very well. It was a good lesson to be learned, though, because in the second quarter of 2020, a well-diversified portfolio came back, roaringly came back, and rewarded for sticking to your investment program. And past two quarters, third quarter, and I'll even talk about the fourth quarter of 2020, even though we're talking about the fiscal year end, have been kind of muted. But I think it's been well-received by investors and the market. I think it was time to take a little breather, and a muted return was somewhat welcomed by fixed income investors. So let me move forward, then, and just look at some numbers. But that's sort of the backdrop of what went on during 2020. You'll note we ended the fiscal year with a total market value of $43,423,702, and that is on performance, I'll point you to the last 12 months, that's the fiscal year ending September 30th, a return of 3.82%, but outperformed the benchmark, which was at a 358, so about 24 basis points, or .24% of outperformance relative to the city's benchmark. So we think that's quite good. Now, what I failed to say is that the Fed stepped in in March when the pandemic hit, and they lowered rates, two emergency meetings, by 150 basis points, 1.5%. When interest rates go down, bond prices go up. That was sort of the driver of your return during the fiscal year, was that decrease in rates. So I say that only to kind of paint the picture for the coming 12 months. That's going to be a headwind now for you going forward, because we don't see interest rates falling, nor can they really fall any further to drive prices up, okay? So what helped in the last fiscal year will be a headwind into next year and potentially even into the following year, as, again, interest rates have nowhere to go, as bonds have to be reinvested, they're going to be reinvested at lower yields, so you're going to receive lower income in the portfolio as well. So not to paint an ugly picture, but just want to be real with you about some of the challenges that you may face here going forward. The good news is, this is a longer-duration portfolio, so I'll point you down here to the duration column. A longer-duration portfolio, meaning that we have locked in some higher-income securities because of the fact that it does have longer maturities in the portfolio. So you're not going to realize these lower interest rates right away, okay? You do have a little bit of a cushion to look forward to in the coming quarters. The yield at cost is about 166. To put that into perspective, a bank account today probably earning nothing. Money market fund, you might be lucky to get anywhere from 2 basis points to 10 basis points, .02% to .10%. So again, to put that into perspective, a 1.66% is not horrible, okay? So being longer duration, having longer maturities in the portfolio, is going to help the city here in the coming quarters in this low-rate environment. And it's been pretty clear that the Fed is planning to remain on the sideline for some time. Let me stop there. I've thrown a lot at you in a short amount of time. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I think the Fed reiterated that today with their meeting, just today.
Today, and then tomorrow we'll get a real direction from them.
Let's see the minutes, yeah?
Yep, that's exactly right. So, looking at the next page, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here. I think the point being, the lower left-hand corner points to that highly diversified portfolio that I mentioned earlier that did well for you during the second quarter. The high credit quality, the portfolio carries an average credit quality of AA. You can see that reference in the pie chart in the lower right, the breakdown of credit quality. The chart to the top, I'll kind of speak to strategy at a high level within the portfolio. So we look at the previous fiscal year to the most recent fiscal year end, September of 2020. And the real takeaway is, I'll point you to the treasuries line. The treasury allocation peaked at about 36.6% at the end of December 2019, and into March stood at about 36%. And that was, again, the right call, the safety, the liquidity that treasuries provided was the right call. You'll note that we have since lowered that allocation. We ended the fiscal year at 21%. Where'd that money go? Well, the one thing that presented itself through all this was agencies became quite attractive again. So you'll note that the allocation went from a 2.17% to 20, a little over 20% during the course of the year. So it had been close to a decade since agencies were really attractive relative to treasuries from a yield standpoint. And so we tried to take advantage of the opportunity that presented itself during the first quarter and second quarter of 2020. The other story, we did lighten corporates, just in light of what was going on in the economy. We've been very selective about the names we'll add in that space, so we've been a little bit slower to add in that particular sector. And then another sector that presented itself over the course of the last 12 months is munis. Munis, once again, relative to the other sectors that are available to purchase, became quite attractive, and we went from almost 2% to 6%. It doesn't seem like a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, that's a pretty big move within a sector. Places like New York, Minnesota, Mississippi, Maryland, those are some of the names, there's even a couple pieces of Florida paper in that particular sector that make up your muni Not a lot to say on the next page here, just looking at maturities. I'll say generally, they're in line with the previous fiscal year end. You'll note we are a little bit higher in weighting in the two- to three-year space, and that's really just a byproduct of the story I just told you about agencies. Higher allocation to agencies means a little higher allocation to that two- to three-year part of the curve, just because that's where we're finding value. That's just the attractive part of the curve for us now. But no great story here. It's really in line with the previous fiscal year end. And then I want to finish with a compliance summary. We think, this is a page that appears in our quarterly presentation for you all. We think it's one of the most important slides in the presentation. What we're looking at here is the part on the top, the bar chart on the top, the gold bars represent the amount that is permitted by the city's investment policy, how much you can put in that particular sector, all right? The blue bars represent how much is actually allocated within that particular sector. And unlike a tank of gas here, you really don't want a full tank of gas. You want to have the ability to be nimble, the ability to move amongst sectors, okay? And so you don't have that issue. You can see, you do not have a full tank of gas in any of the sectors allowable by ordinance and policy here. So that's a good thing. Also, I just want to note that you are in compliance with the allocations permitted by policy. That's the column over to the far right. So no issues there, and that's the most important thing. So we show you by sector on this page. The next two pages, we show you by actual individual issuer. So again, the amount permitted by policy per issuer, and the fact that you are in compliance across the board. Let me stop there. That's all I had as far as prepared remarks. I'd be glad to address any questions or anything that jumped out at you in this report as we went through it.
Keeping in mind that we want to keep this a conservative investment, I mean, that's our goal.
Correct.
We don't want to leave it in the bank and have it do nothing, but we don't want to go backwards. So if our approach seems ultra-conservative to people, well, then they're right, it is. Any questions?
I was actually gonna suggest Scott maybe touch on that mindset, but I think you just covered it well, Mayor, because I know sometimes, you know, residents might be watching this at home and looking at some of the numbers, and those are good numbers for us, whereas they may look at them as their personal investments and go, oh, I'm doing better with this and that and what have you. That's not really what this is about, so.
We can't afford those swings.
Yeah, we can't afford the swings and the losses, so we stay really conservative in the positive direction, so.
That's exactly right.
Drew, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Chase, Jonathan, good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
We appreciate you.
Good to see you, Scott.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Cass. See you next year.
All right.
Dr. Neils can stand handy here for a second, because, oh, well, what's item six? It happens to be Florida Government Finance Professionals Week. Therefore, proclamation being issued by myself for the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, being a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the FGFOA, too many initials, is dedicated to bringing you a professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, information, and whereas this inaugural Government Finance Professional Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and all its member government organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide to our state and our community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now, therefore, I, Donald O'Burnett, Mayor of the City of Port Orange, do hereby proclaim March 15th to 19th, 2021, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the City of Port Orange, and extend our appreciation to all our government finance professionals throughout the state and here in the City of Port Orange especially, and for their hard work, their dedication, and their leadership. And with the seal of the city and my signature, it is declared on this day and in this place. This is the part where at least one of us looks to do, one time, the whole nine yards. Consent agenda, public comments on consent agenda items only. There being none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a proper second, to approve items nine through 15 on consent. Call the roll.
Councilmember Holy.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Stilner.
Yes.
Mayor Bassett.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett. Yes, five of them. Board appointments, interviews, and reports. Item 16, Assistant Advisory Committee for the TPO, Mr. Bobby Ball.
Good evening. Bobby Ball with the TPO, CAC for the TPO. We had our monthly meeting, yeah, I know. We had our monthly meeting, and there wasn't a lot of true business, but there were some presentations, particularly, there's a lot of new people on our committee, so they kind of have been taking each month and doing something new. And this month, last month, they talked about priority process. This month, Lois talked a lot about the sidewalk and the pedestrian issues going on with the, I forgot the article that came out recently, but she basically was going through that process and talked a lot about how we got to where we are with road design and the standards and all the different ways that safety is measured and how it's, you know, accomplished. So it was really interesting and good for everybody here. It's not, some of the articles that were written were a little bit unfair, in their opinion, and probably true. But in any case, there's some good information out there, and you'll probably get the same defense when you get to the board meeting, so I don't really have anything new, per se.
I hadn't heard all that yet from Lois's staff, but my recollection, wasn't there a very small area over on the A1A corridor that accounted for a large percentage of those pedestrian issues or something? I mean, I could be off on that, but I thought there was.
She didn't go into the details, she went into more of the process and how that report was crafted and what it, you know, the benchmarks and the measurable that they used and how they got there. So it wasn't specifically about the answers, but about how they got to those answers.
Got it.
Nothing else, though.
Any other questions? It's an easy one tonight.
Yeah, nothing really new.
So I gotta ask you this, real quick. How's it feel now to be only the second-best golfer in your household?
It's a humbling experience at times.
Proud, though.
Absolutely.
Given the chance, I can still get them.
There you go.
Get in his head, right?
Sabotaging his gloves.
Item 17, Fire Pension Board, fifth member appointment, Mr. Chris Taylor. This is a ministerial duty of council, which, as many of you know, absolutely drives me crazy to say that we have to do this as a ministerial duty, so why do it at all? It's done, basically, but this is a ministerial duty, so we shall do it. I would like to have a nomination to make it official that Mr. Chris Taylor is the Fire Pension Board fifth member, even though it's already done.
Move to confirm the appointment of Chris Taylor as the fifth member of the Fire Pension Board as appointed by the members on February 16th, 2021.
Second.
We have a beautiful motion and a proper second. Like I said, we're making official what's already done. Any comments or questions? Anyone want to come talk us out of it? Because you can, even if you wanted to, it's ministerial in nature. Comments, council? Being none, call the roll.
Councilmember Holy.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Stilner.
Yes.
Mayor Bassett.
Yes.
Yes, five of them. Town Center CRA appointments. We have an application from one Mr. Michael Benedict. We happen to have one opening. See how that works with the effective resignation of Mr. Ray Donadio, who no longer owns property within the CRA, so that opened up the position. So I would accept the nomination at this time.
Move to nominate Michael Benedict to the Town Center CRA Board.
Second.
We have a motion, a proper second. Is Mr. Benedict present?
Here.
Mr. Benedict is here.
Come on up. Saw you hiding in the corner there.
He can hardly withstand the anticipation, right?
Well, he's already seen what the pay and benefits are.
Thank you.
So first of all, you got a real winner under the bridge there.
Thank you very much. Soon you're talking about Jimmy Hoolos.
You betcha.
We have a couple. We have also my advertising agency, Benedict Advertising, right next door, and a lot of questions about the brewery that we get.
Oh, I'm sure.
Which is hopefully opening in July, so.
Of this year?
Construction's tough. Yep, July of this year. I'll ask my wife to stop asking so many questions. That's all right. I love all the people that walk by and stop and talk to me.
Yeah, because we know it's his wife that's asking the questions about the brewery.
There's a lot of good, healthy people walking by that want to finish their walk with a beer, which is great, so we're very excited about opening up.
Will you be serving Diet Coke there? I don't drink, but I'd like to be able to hang out with these guys when I do.
Sure. We actually do plan on having non-alcoholic beverages as well, yes.
One or two. What are you implying?
Implying that I would love to spend time with you guys while you're having your beverage.
Way to save, good save. Any questions for the applicant council?
No, thanks for your willingness to serve.
Appreciate it.
Great, yeah, I'm excited about it. Thank you guys very much, everyone here, thank you.
I appreciate the investment in the community, too.
We love it. We love being here, long time in the community.
Appreciate it. I think everybody, or most everybody, is familiar with Benedict Advertising, if not by name, by reputation, and the fact that you're willing to serve. I can't say enough. Like I said, wait till you see our pay and benefits.
That's great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, council? Any other comments or questions, counsel? There being none, call the roll.
House Member Foley.
Yes.
House Member Tremont.
Yes.
House Member Silkenberg.
Yes.
Vice President Vashton.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, five oh, you're hired.
Thank you very much.
And don't go far, because we are going to recess as counsel and now open as the Town Center CRA meeting. Would Mr. Vice Chair Stan Schmidt come and take the gamble from me?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'll put you to work immediately.
That's right.
You got your script, right?
Of course.
They gave you the right one?
Robin wouldn't let me up here without my scripts.
I hereby call the regular meeting of the Town Center Community Redevelopment Agency to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Stan Schmidt.
Yes.
Donald Burnett.
Here.
Vice President Vashton.
Here.
Scott Silkenberg.
Here.
Chase Tremont.
Here.
Jonathan Foley.
Yes, here.
Michael Benedict.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have any objections to the notice of the meeting? Hearing no objection, the notice is accepted. First order of business tonight is we need to have a nomination for the position of chairman. Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to nominate you, Mr. Stan Schmidt, to be our chair.
I will second that.
Wow, that was pretty strong.
With conviction.
There we go. All right, do you want to just do this by acclamation?
Yeah.
Call the roll and you can do a voice vote. I think the clerk would just say we can do a voice vote. All in favor of electing this guy as your chairman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by nay. Okay.
You got it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to address you properly. I'd like to make a motion to amend, after you answer your phone, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minute, or I'm sorry, amend the agenda to add the election of a vice chair. He's our second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of amending the agenda to provide for the election of a vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll immediately go then to the nomination for a vice chairman of this board. Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Chase Tremont.
Second.
There's a second. Any other nominations? Any discussion? Okay, let's do that by acclamation also. All those in favor of electing Councilman Chase Tremont as our vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Mr. Tremont, you are it. Next order of business is I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September 15th, 2020. Do you want to do, Robin, could we do both of them at one time?
Yeah.
Okay. And the December 1st, 2020, meetings of the Town Center Community Redevelopment Agency.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, all those, I guess we have to do a roll call on this. If the clerk will please read the roll. This is.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes.
Vice President Vashton.
Yes.
Scott Silkenberg.
Yes.
Chase Tremont.
Yes.
Jonathan Foley.
Yes.
Michael Benedict.
Yes.
Stan Schmidt.
Yes. Item number three, well, we're probably up to four now, is a consideration of the Town Center CRA annual report for fiscal year 19 and 20. How do you want to do this? Is there going to be a presentation, or have you all read this thing?
It was electronic copy.
We even got the right one.
There you go.
Were there any questions?
I move to accept the report as presented.
Second.
I actually did have a question myself, so can I? Well, now that you have a motion, a second, you can discuss it. That's it. So if I can hand this over to Mr. Tremont? You're going to recognize one of it.
Oh, I would recognize Tim Berman.
Here to answer any questions.
Oh, okay. Looking at this, it looks like our cash balance is upside down. And we're going to be on the hook for about $400,000 for debt service for next year. How do we do that?
How do we basically not have to pay that?
It's a miracle. I mean, is that what happens? Do we just?
It was basically for the purchase of the land, then. Basically, that's what we have to do to keep the CRA in pain, the bills that we have, then, is to bring that debt on it. That's why we're trying to encourage development there.
Right.
To, you know, and possibly look at the sale of that property, then, to help get us out of that.
Okay. Yeah, that was, because I would look at these numbers, I'm going, we got a little problem here, fellas.
Any little development helps there in terms of bringing the money to the CRA, which will lower that, then. But, you know, we still have to have those larger developments to get us more return, then. Right now, we're just seeing, you know, moderate increases there. We got the Fish, which is coming along there. That's a, you know, major development, and we'll have a workshop here in the end of April, which I think we can start talking about developments that are going to kind of trip that threshold.
Okay. So it looks like it'll be happening in this fiscal year, then?
Not getting completely out of that, then. I'm saying we're going to be, we're going to be seeing developments that help chip away at that.
Okay.
It's a pretty significant amount, then. But like I said, we're on the trend, you know, before, there was a lot of years where we did not see development occurring there. You look at the reports of the past couple of years, you know, such as the Down Under and Riverwalk, we are starting to see redevelopment in that area, and that is allowing us to slowly chip away at that amount, then. Not going to say it's going to go away next year, we're just going to be able to chip away at it.
Yeah. Yeah, because we've had the Atlantic Marine and GAFs and some things come along that are, like you said, chipping away at it.
Yeah. And there was years of non-development that basically kind of added up, then, so. But we're on the right swing forward, and we continue to, you know, use that momentum to move forward, then.
That's all I have. Mr. Chair, if you could, I'd like to add to that one question. Mr. Berman, when does the CRA sunset?
I believe in 2036. So we are running out of time.
The clock is ticking.
Yes.
Yep.
We'll pass the gamble back to the chairman.
Tim, real quick, the property that Olson Custom Homes has acquired, that also falls in this one?
Correct, that's in the CRA.
Right across the street, okay.
Yeah, right across from the park, that's within our CRA, then.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the Town Center CRA annual report for fiscal year 19 and 20. Let's have a roll, please.
Do you mind asking for a public comment first?
Oh, good point. Any public comment on what you've heard so far? Okay, hearing none, I guess now we can move forward with the roll.
Donald Burnett.
Yes.
Vice President Vashton.
Yes.
Scott Silkenberg.
Yes.
Chase Tremont.
Yes.
Jonathan Foley.
Yes.
Michael Benedict.
Yes.
Stan Schmidt.
Yes. All right, any further public comments on anything for the CRA? Any comments from the board members? Just wanted to congratulate Mr. Benedict for getting his business into the proper city. Was there for a long time, I think, October?
Yep, it was October, end of September, October, right in there.
You know, we have talked about the River District and all the promise that it has, and now you're a new membership in the Down Under area of the River District, and we wish you all the success in the world. And me personally, I'm happy to have you and your input in the CRA. This is exactly what we need from the two additional people that are on this board, is the input for people that operate day-to-day down there that are impacted by it.
Thank you very much.
Any other business before the CRA? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
We'll move that on.
Keep going.
Okay. With that one, do we have to relocate some people? All right. With the Town Center CRA meeting being adjourned, I will. Huh? Okay. Oh, yeah, everybody can go back. Okay, with that, I'll call the regular meeting of the Eastport Business Center Community Redevelopment Agency to order. We have a roll call, please?
Donald Burnett.
Here.
Vice President Vashton.
Here.
Scott Silkenberg.
Here.
Chase Tremont.
Here.
Jonathan Foley.
Here.
Do I have any objections to the notice of this meeting? Hearing none, the notice is accepted. Two, do I have a motion, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2020, meeting of the Town Center CRA?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Donald Burnett.
Yes.
Vice President Vashton.
Yes.
Scott Silkenberg.
Yes.
Chase Tremont.
Yes.
Jonathan Foley.
Yes.
All right, and item three, consideration of the Eastport Business Center CRA annual report for FY 2019, 2020. Is there, do we need any presentation?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to accept the Eastport Business Center CRA annual report for fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
Second.
Having a motion and a proper second. Do a roll call vote?
Oh, you might want to ask for comments from the board and from the public.
Wait a minute, oh, okay, I got you.
Just saying.
Yeah, yeah. Any comments from the CRA board?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to note that unlike the last one, this one is a whole lot more solvent.
Yes. It is, and the report proves that. Any comment, any public comments on this? None? Final comments from the CRA prior to the vote? No final comments? Please call the roll.
Donald Burnett.
Yes.
Vice President Vashton.
Yes.
Scott Silkenberg.
Yes.
Chase Tremont.
Yes.
Jonathan Foley. Yes.
Any further public comments for the Town Center, or Eastport CRA? None? Any further business to be brought before the members of the Eastport Business CRA? No further business? There being none, meeting is adjourned.
Give me that.
There you go.
And council is resumed session, starting with citizen participation non-agenda, Mr. Robert Reinhegan. I'm going to ask the city attorney to pay particular attention to this, please.
Mayor, council members, Robert Reinhegan, 1425 Dexter Drive North, Port Orange. The last city council meeting, we heard from a woman who had a lot of problems with the, getting her son's motorcycle from the record service. And he had been killed, and she had trouble getting it. What I wanted to particularly point out is that here's a person whose son had died, and she had to get the vehicle, get the motorcycle. And in the invitation, the request for proposal, it talks about the release of the vehicle, page 10, paragraph 14. "The towing company shall require proper proof of ownership or right of possession before releasing a vehicle." Now, the question is, here's a woman whose son died, and I'm not sure, but I think he was an adult, so what right of possession did she have? And in this request for proposal, it never defines what constitutes right of possession. I mean, does she have to sit back and wait for a judge, a probate judge, to make her the representative of the estate in order to get the vehicle back? That's my concern, that it's never clearly identified what constitutes the right of possession. And I would like to see something in here that identifies it, and that the, in particular, the agent for the insurance company can operate for the person. Because the person may be in the hospital and unable to get out. And so if the real, if the agent for the insurance company could get the vehicle, that would be very helpful. The other thing is, when this group, there was a meeting that I went to, it was about two weeks prior, two or three weeks prior, where they were talking about this request for proposal, and the evaluation committee was talking about how they had evaluated the companies. And one of the things that they did was they talked to people that were references. I think we need to have an audit system whereby we actually sample the people who have had their cars towed and find out how well they were treated by the record company. Thank you for your time.
There being none others, city citizen, council comments. Let's start this side this time, Jonathan?
The only thing I want to say tonight is I want to applaud some staff. I was out walking Memorial Park about two weeks ago, I think it was, and I noticed some of the boards had begun to come up. And I'm not sure if it was because of the time of year with the hot cold, what caused it. Either way, I reported that information over to Jamie, and she forwarded onward. And within a matter of two, three days, it was out there, and they fixed, repaired that. And so I just want to applaud staff for being so responsive and taking care of that. It just goes to show what a great staff we have here in the city.
Took you two to three days, why does it take me only two to three hours to get it repaired?
That's what happens when you're the mayor versus the interim.
What else you got?
That's it.
Good job. Chase?
Yeah, just a brief comment, also compliments of staff. You know, we got a big week coming up, Thursday, meet and greet with prospective managers, and Friday, all-day interviews. And we very well, possibly will have a selected city manager. And staff's done a terrific job getting us through this time period. I had a wonderful meeting this afternoon on a Riverwalk vision plan, and what I appreciate about our staff, and Jamie, and Susan, and the rest, having sat idly by and just bide time while we await a new leader. Press forward and look for avenues in which to make our city continue to progress in the absence of a permanent leader. So when that leader does get here, they're ready to hit the ground running on something that has not been stalled. So my compliments, my compliments to council for all of that as well. So Jamie, just appreciate the job you've done, and the rest of your team.
Drew?
Don't really have anything. I'd echo that and just say I'm looking forward to Thursday and Friday and getting through the process.
Scott?
I just want to note, really good groundbreaking event last week over at the Point, at the Riverwalk area, for the new Fish FYSH. That'll take a little getting used to, restaurant, that was a very nice event. It's a very exciting thing. If people haven't seen that, there's, what I understand, there's going to be quite the social media blitz coming in about a month from the owner of that restaurant, and what the residents can expect, but some good coverage in the news journals, so I appreciate that as well. I think it's going to be not only a great restaurant and an addition to the community, but it's really going to shape up like a destination, which I think is fabulous. To that note, Jamie, I'd like to ask that we make sure, any events that we're having in that area, that we've got an up-to-date listing of our folks that sit on different boards and have certain interest in that area, that we're keeping them as informed as possible. I got Mr. Benedict's card, because I was thinking, you know, that board alone, just him and Stan, I want to make sure that when there's things that are occurring down there, that they're being notified, just like council is, so that they can participate. And to that, we have an event, just to mention real quick, coming up, the Port Orange Community Trust, so I don't botch the dates here, which is also known as Family Days to a lot of residents in Port Orange. They are hosting a Riverwalk Park Festival in the River District at Riverwalk Park, Saturday, March 27th and 28th. They're going to have some live entertainment, food, a few vendors, they're keeping things a little spaced out and spread out. It's an open-air environment. And I believe, if I'm correct, Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan Foley is responsible for weather.
So. He is.
Pretty much a slam dunk. Pretty much a slam dunk.
We either give it to the chamber, or we give it to the new guy.
Yeah, right, so, anyway, yeah, that's a, that'll be a nice event. We haven't really seen events like that in a really long time in the city, and we'll ease back into that, but also to build the momentum and the excitement down in the River District.
Scott, that's him down there checking the extended forecast.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's all I got tonight.
With that, just wanted, Jamie, tell me if we're, are we full for Thursday evening yet, or are there some openings?
We are right at the cusp of what we're looking to be at, so we will be looking to wind down the RSVPs for that event.
And what I'm talking about, of course, is the city manager reception, public reception Thursday night at 6 o'clock at Lakeside Community Center. We have to be cognizant of space and safety. We can't put too many people in that room to, but we are hosting those five individuals who we're going to be grilling and interviewing extensively on Friday, so...
Yes, along those lines, I just would like to reiterate, we are asking everybody in attendance to try to do what they can to adhere to socially-distanced guidelines, wear a mask, and so I want to make sure that we're reemphasizing those for those in attendance.
Chase, would you have to add?
Yeah, just going to ask, you know, with the new recommendations of being three feet, as opposed to six feet and social distancing, will that impact our ability to have more folks, should the occupancy demand it?
So, the event is, can be an in-and-out flow of an event. We have it set to be approximately in an hour and a half to two hours long.
Are we utilizing the outdoor space as well?
We will be setting up tables for the outdoor space. We will have the doors open, so we will not be checking names for RSVPs at the door, and as long as we don't find that we're getting in a situation of capacity concern, then we won't be turning people away.
Good deal. Thank you. Okay. And then, of course, Friday morning, all of us will be doing our individual interviews. The afternoon, 1:30, I think it is, we will convene as council here, and we will begin our interviews, and by the end of the day, we, the good Lord willing, we should have our next city manager. Just let everybody know, we are well on our way.
Except 1:00, Mayor, not 1:00.
1:00? Maybe I had 12:30 in mind, for 12:30 and 1:00 being the brief lunch.
That will be streamed?
Yes, it will.
All our deliberations, once we come together, it will be must-see TV.
Can you send out a link to where, so I can post that, people can see, this is what you click on for Friday?
Yes, sir.
Please, thank you.
And that brings us to regular agenda. Item 20, first reading of ordinance number 2021-9.
Move the...
No, hold on a second.
Oh, yeah, you've got to read it, yeah.
Yeah, I had it up, and then I looked at something else, and then my screen shrank. So, we'll try it again. Ordinance number 2021-9 is an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2-2 of the Code of Ordinances relating to fingerprinting of employees, providing for clarification of pre-employment screening, providing for litigation, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number 2021-9.
Second. We have a motion, proper second. The item is open on the floor for discussion. Jamie, who's presenting?
Yes, Mayor, I will be presenting tonight, very briefly, Mayor and Council.
I had a feeling.
Yes, thank you. This is an item where we are looking to update a portion of our ordinance that has not been reviewed in a while. The current provisions simply indicate that employee is required to register their fingerprints with the police department. Our current practice for pre-employment screenings includes a number of different type of screenings, some of them based on level of security. A police officer's background check is going to be different than some of our other positions. So, we do identify, based on position and the level of security risk, what type of backgrounds, but it is more than a simple fingerprinting process. So, this amendment will allow us to be reflective of requirements. We have incorporated our Florida statute requirements, as well as recognize our other screenings that are performed by policy. We have attached the policy to this item tonight, and we are recommending approval of this item.
Comments, questions, council? Jonathan, anything?
Not really, no.
What you got, dry, Chase?
Yeah, I do have one question, and I'm trying to, my computer's slow bringing it up, but it references e-Verify at the end of this agenda. My question is, do we, while we comply with these rules and regulations, do we require that the companies we award bids to use e-Verify?
Yes, that is through our purchasing process, but we do e-Verify for our contractors. Yes, yes.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Drew, anything?
Nothing further.
Scott? Would anyone here care to speak to the item? There being none, back to council, final comments or questions? There being none, call the roll.
Councilmember Foley?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Stiller?
Yes.
Senator Drouin-Bashin?
Yes.
Yes, 5-0. I was sitting there, every time Stan had a vote, it went 7-0, I'm like, no matter what I do, I'll never get to 7-nothing. With that, city attorney comments?
Nothing, Mike.
Interim city manager?
Yes, just one brief item tonight. I do want to acknowledge, we have Mr. Bruce Hutacek, I believe it's pronounced, in the audience. He is new to our team, and he is our assistant budget manager, so I just wanted to recognize his presence tonight.
Welcome, welcome aboard.
And with that, I believe finance is fully staffed?
Just about, yes.
Okay. Getting there. City council committee reports, arthouse. Who's doing the arthouse report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I actually don't have any update, they're going to have another meeting upcoming shortly, I'll have more the next time.
First Step Shelter?
And First Step, the only thing I'll ask is that we can put on an agenda soon for a discussion on a budget resolution for fiscal year 20 to 21, if we are going to participate for this fiscal year. We should have that discussion.
Councilman, do they have any agreements with any of the other agencies or jurisdictions that they've entered into, or are they just accepting funds, and that's kind of how it's gone with some of the other agencies? Do you know that answer?
Yeah, every city that is, if a city wants to utilize that facility, whether for, to refer someone to the shelter, or utilize the safe zone for Pottinger compliance issue, then you participate by paying a share, whatever your city decides. So, Ormond, South Daytona, Holly Hill, Ponce Inlet, and now, as of recently, Daytona Beach Shores, and the county.
And I bring it up because I know that the council's been very specific about what they want out of this shelter, and I just want to maybe take the opportunity, if there's one out there, then great, we can kind of use a form agreement that's out there, but this may be one where, you know, along with that appropriation, you may want to have some sort of understanding between the city of Port Orange and the shelter as to what we're getting for that money.
Well, and I have, I have made that, did discuss that in our previous meeting, that, as we are participating municipality, we expect the door to be open, and there's always room in the end if we're going to be utilizing that. So, how to get the wording in, I agree, needs to be, should be included in some sort of, any sort of document that we're, I'm not opposed to us doing that. I don't know what other cities do, I don't believe that there's any contractual obligations. I don't know that we want to enter into contractual agreement. I leave that to your discretion, though. But, yeah, there's, we have, our goal, I guess, has been, from the beginning, we want Pottinger complacency throughout our city. This is the avenue that gives us that at the most cost-effective rate that we can get it. Otherwise, we've got to figure out how to do it ourselves. So, from that standpoint alone, I think is what we're, as a council, as a body responsible for tax dollars, that's our goal, in addition to the benefits of being a part of the program in and of itself. That's the way I would present it. I'll leave that to councils for consensus on that.
Chase, how do they determine?
We've got to stop right there. We said we were going to add this to an agenda for discussion item. Matt asked for some clarification, and since this is not on tonight's agenda, we really can't discuss it, he's just making a report. So, if you have a question about the report, I'm sorry, just want to make sure that we stay on topic.
Not about the report, but I mean, we're going to have to determine how they ask, you know, what do they require of funding from all these cities? I want to know what...
Yeah, well, and that's, and I don't mind speaking of that, because that's the reason for requesting it to be on the agenda. So, but, yeah, we, based on our commitment, we've said we're going to participate. We gave money back in, I think, 16 or 17, but that $35,000 was not, we asked that...
Operating funds, and they weren't operating yet.
Exactly. So, which allowed it, when it was open for 1920, that money was applied, and it was operating, so therefore we participated. We were withholding any future participation based on the enaction of the safe zone. Now, that is in place, it's there, it's exactly what we were waiting on before we continued any future participation. Now that it is there, based on our commitment, at least by word of mouth, and our initial commitment into it, we are liable for, not only say liable, based on our word, we should be due the current fiscal year 2021 participation money that we have, that we do. If we were, if we decide as a council to continue.
God bless Roseanne Tornator for the financial contribution to make that safe zone happen.
Yeah, indeed. And also, because of the shift from bringing it in-house, as opposed to Catholic Charities, Catholic Charities didn't want any part of it, understandably so. But it would have been that much more difficult, probably not up and running still, that Catholic Charity's still been in charge of operating the day-to-day operations. Now that is in, we were able to get it in in a matter of two months.
Anything else? Okay. Port Orange, South Daytona, Chamber of Commerce, oh, well, that pretty young lady over there, what's her name, Reggie Hunter? Please come up here for just a second. We don't get to do very many things in person because of COVID, and since this year's chairman is here, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew, Ms. Reggie Hunter, and she is this year's chairman. Normally, council, the mayor and the manager meet with the chamber on a monthly basis. This Friday would have been our date, but unfortunately, we're going to be picking a city manager, so we'll have to put that off a week, but look forward to sitting and having conversations.
I look forward to it also.
You got anything you want to report to us?
Not a thing, I'm just traveling incognito this evening.
Not very well, you got picked right out.
Person behind the mask, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Reggie.
Thanks for obliging me, Reggie. Roundtable of elected officials, we met Monday of last week. The, of course, the elephant in the room for all of us is COVID-19 vaccine distribution, and Director of Public Protection for the county, Mr. Joe Pozo, and the Administrator of the Florida Department of Health for Volusia County, Patricia Boswell, both presented to us and got peppered with a ton of questions. Basically, vaccine distribution and its success, bottom line is, it is dependent on the availability of the product, and we are starting to see availability start to pick up. Roughly 18% of Volusia County has had at least one vaccination, so we're starting to make some progress, and the expectation is, in the next 30 days, we're going to start seeing vaccinations take off. The other thing we discussed, Michael Ploys, the city manager of Deland, who is happily employed by the city of Deland, I tried, can't help that, I have a lot of respect for him. Michael Ploys gave a presentation on the gas tax agreement that all the city managers are working on currently. That will be coming before us soon, and I think, just to comment, that the biggest thing is, is that this is a work in progress, and this agreement, of course, is working towards the next agreement, in that the city managers are trying to get us to a more equitable share. There are some things in there that made absolutely no sense, but were there, that you can't get out, because like anything, there are winners and losers with anything, and the losers want what they seem as equitable, and we were a loser before, and the winners don't want to give up their share, and I understand that, particularly when gas tax revenues are not growing the way we need them to, so it's hard enough keeping up with roads as it is. I don't believe that, in my opinion, and we will discuss it further, that Port Orange is going to be majorly impacted one way or the other. Anything, we might be a slight loser, but I think in the equity question, we'll see that when that comes before us. So, I think that was the gist of his presentation, is that they were striving for more equity. And that, wow, that was it for the council committee reports. Did any of the other business come before us this evening? If not, have a good night, and I'll see you all on Thursday.